All right, it being 6:30, I'm going to call to order a meeting of the Oregon School District Board of Education. It is December 13th, and we are here in the Innovation Center at Oregon High School. Katie, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Bijak?
Here.
Mr. Garrison, Ms. Garrison?
Yep.
Mr. Mary?
Here.
Dr. Lakuta?
Here.
Mr. LeBrun?
Here.
Mr. Pankretz?
Present.
Ms. Flanigan?
Present. The board does have a quorum. I do have from Ms. Heights that this meeting has been properly noticed. If anybody would like to see that, that will be with her. In terms of our agenda tonight, we do have a pretty full agenda. We do have Policy 565 and 566. Dr. Bergstrom will present some information, then we'll go into some Policy 175 decision-making. We'll have committee reports. We have a few information items, and then the board will be going into closed session tonight, and if we do need to come back and open session, we will do that. So that is our agenda for tonight. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Katie, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Mr. Pankretz?
Yes.
Ms. Flanigan?
Yes, that motion passes. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. I do have a couple of things that I wanted to talk through under staff resignations. We did receive notice that Deb Bossingham is retiring or resigning as our aquatics director, and she's been in that position for 24 years. So if she is watching, I want to make sure that we thank her for her service to the Oregon School District. I think many of us know how important the pool is in this community, and she has probably touched the large majority of families in our community. And, you know, from swimming lessons to swim team to parties to adult lap swim to senior water aerobics. So we want to be sure to wish Deb well in her next adventure and thank her for her service to the Oregon School District. So thank you, Deb. Also want to talk through donations. We have quite a few this evening. $500 from Diane Slider Agency for the Oregon Brooklyn Splash Pad. We have $75 from Letha and Bob Schenkenberg for the Oregon Pool. We have $250 from the Marvelous Morsels for Student Council Holiday Family Support Fundraiser. $100 from Kristen and Christopher Earthforth for the Student Council Holiday Family Support Fundraiser. $500 from One Community Bank for that Student Council Fundraiser. $100 from Firefly Coffee House and Artisan Cheese for the Student Council Holiday Family Support Fundraiser. $500 from the Oregon Brooklyn Memorial VFW Post 10272 for the Oregon Brooklyn Splash Pad Bench, and then $500 from the Marsden Family for the Oregon Brooklyn Splash Pad Bench. So we want to be sure to thank all of the community members for their active support of our school district. Thank you so much. All right. If there aren't any items that board members would like to have removed from the consent calendar, I will entertain a motion to approve.
No motion?
Is there a second?
Okay.
Okay. Katie, could you please call the roll?
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Pankretz?
Yes.
Ms. Flanigan?
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda is B information items. First is public comments. Katie, do we have anybody registered for public comment?
Yeah.
Okay. Next is OEA report?
No comment.
No comment? Okay, great. Moving on to C action items. First on the agenda is health and safety measures, Policy 565 and 566. So I will turn it over to Dr. Bergstrom for her presentation, and then immediately following that, I will have some comments. So, go ahead, Dr. Bergstrom. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. So, for this evening, we'll just do a little bit of an update on what things have developed since we were last together, specifically related to our back-together plan. You know, our priorities all along have been ensuring that our students are feeling well, both mentally and physically, and then having high-quality teaching and learning. We've stayed very consistent with that. And then our goal throughout this time is to have safe, in-person learning and to keep our students in school with very minimal disruption. And this goal has required us to continually reexamine where we are because the landscape is continually changing. So, related to that, let's think about the factors that we consider. You see that in the middle is our goal, and then we have the OSD policies and health guidance, information about vaccines, our close contacts and quarantines, and our data. So around that, first you see that the day after we met last time, so that would be November 23rd, is when Public Health reissued a mask mandate extending that until January 3rd. We also know that our policies are working, and they are what is recommended by the state, local, and national experts. And we'll talk about that a little bit further in a moment. Also, vaccines are available for ages 5 to 11. Takes five weeks from your first dose. We've had the first and second dose clinic now for our 5 to 11 group. So, as we discussed last time, as vaccination rates increase, that's when we can start thinking about peeling mask max, peeling back mask requirements, which is one of our many safety strategies. We would peel back to a masked, mask-encouraged environment, and that results in more quarantines, particularly among the population that is not yet vaccinated. And then I want to mention how important data is, and I'll say that a couple of times this evening. We have to continually be looking at what is the information in front of us. So, back in November, when we first started discussing whether or not we should peel back a safety strategy, we were in the high category as far as transmission, and that's the CDC and the DHS high category. But it was on the lower end, and I think the hope was that with increased vaccinations, we'd move to the moderate. And unfortunately, since our last meeting, we've moved in the opposite direction, and we're now in the very high. So our policy has been 565 and 566, the idea that the board is adopting administrative guidelines that are in accordance from multiple experts, and we're using broad data points to safeguard the health and safety of our school community. And that policy is something that we adhered to on November 22nd when we last discussed this. So, to go over, what is the guidance? Well, the guidance, nothing has changed since the last time we were together. All of these organizations are continuing to recommend universal masking regardless of vaccination status in schools. And we discussed a little bit last time that some people are, some school districts are changing their quarantine policy, and that Public Health Madison Dane County sent out something to school districts reminding them that the idea of quarantine is actually a public health piece, and that school districts cannot tell people that they don't have to quarantine. So that was just a reminder from them. So here's where we get into some of the local data, and you can see that all of the counties in Wisconsin are currently in the very high or critically high state related to cases. I think there might be one on there that's in the high category. And then you'll also see an extraordinary large spike in cases since mid-November. And you've also heard many of you on the news about how we are having a bit of a crisis in our hospitals, meaning that our ICU beds are filling up very quickly. And the percentage of 97% was used in the news, I believe, on Friday. So, there's lots of different pieces. When we're talking about data, we're talking about cases within the county, within the state, locally, the number of quarantines that we've had to put into effect, the number of hospital beds, because it's not ever one piece of data. You have to look at multiple pieces because they're all interconnected. They all help tell the story of where we are at the moment. And at the moment, this is where we are. So then if we talk about the impact of our masking strategy on quarantine, we've discussed this many times before. You've seen the little masked faces and the fact that, you know, if you're a close contact in a universally masked environment, you're not required to quarantine. And in a mass-encouraged environment, which would be our next step, our students who are vaccinated would not be required to quarantine unless they had symptoms. But according to current public health guidelines, our students who are not vaccinated would. So, how does that play out? Because that's a really important piece that we want to make sure everybody understands before we take our next step. To see how it's pulling, plays out, I want to make sure we have the right data. So, and you saw this last time with a little bit of an addition. 75% of our middle school students are fully vaccinated, 78% of our high school, 99% of our professional staff. And our current data shows us that we have about 35% of our students aged 5 to 11 who have received both doses. However, remember, it takes a couple of weeks from their second dose to be considered fully immunized. So if you keep that in mind, I just want to point out another piece of data that is concerning, because the last time we met, the number of our positive cases in the school district was 137. The board meeting before, I think it was 105. So we've gone from 137 to 202 since our last board meeting. So that's a pretty, pretty big jump. And we definitely feel it in our contact tracing process. Our contact tracer is working full-time plus in addition to the person who covers weekends. So of those 202 cases, you can see how that breaks down into our population of vaccinated, unvaccinated students and staff. And, oh, actually, this is just students, excuse me. And then you can further break that down. The 180, you see that a very large portion come from our youngest students who haven't been eligible for the vaccination yet, and then some from the group that are. Now, with those 202 cases, so far, our quarantines due to close contact at school, because remember, kids have had to close, had to be quarantined if it's in the home or it's someone they went somewhere with on the weekend or something. But quarantines resulting from school is 52.
Unless they've 52 since the beginning?
Since the beginning of the school year. And just like the 202, since the beginning of the school year. So, just a kind of a fancy little illustration, because you don't know how many people have an opportunity to watch, and we want to make sure that everybody understands how all of this works. So currently, if we just look at 10 students, we're just doing 10 students for the sake of math, right? 10 students in a classroom, one student is positive, and if we just look at our average number, we'll say about 80% of our students are vaccinated. So that means out of 10, two would not be. So currently, in our universal masking, one person's positive, 10 people in the class, there are no, there are no quarantines resulting from that positive case because everybody's masked, right? Unless, of course, they're symptomatic, and then that's, or someone's not wearing the mask correctly, that happens too. In the future, when we go to mask strongly encouraged, just to make sure we know what we're looking at, this would result in two students needing to quarantine. But we know we don't have classes of 10, right? Doesn't work out that way. So let's just look at it a little more, on a little broader scale. So if you look at a K6 classroom, and we'll assume that while some students move from class to class, whether it's for enrichment or support or whatever, you know, causes someone to move from class to class, they don't all stay together. But let's just say we have a 22 to 26 student classroom. And from K to 6, that's a reasonable assumption. So in a mass strongly encouraged environment, one positive case could result in, if we were at the 80%, four to five quarantines from the one positive case. Now, if we are in an elementary classroom where only 35% of our students are fully vaccinated, we'd have considerably more students who may be required to quarantine. Now, remember, it also depends on where they're seated, but we also aren't making our students sit in their seat all day long. They're moving and talking, and they're in small groups, and we're trying to operate class as normally as we possibly can while still being somewhat cognizant of the issue of distance. So if we then look at it for someone who's in grades 7 through 12, this looks like a really pretty quilt, right? And what it is, is this taking that one classroom illustration and then moving it through the fact that a student may have nine classes. And this doesn't even really include lunch, because we know that that's a whole other issue. So in grade 7 through 12, when you're moving every classroom, one case potentially could have 32 to 36 possible quarantines. Doesn't mean that we're never going to move to a mass strongly encouraged environment. As a matter of fact, we've already discussed dates. However, it is something for us all to think about in relationship to where it puts us in relation to our goal. So, just to summarize all of that, more transmissions and more close contacts in school in a mass-encouraged environment will lead to more quarantines, unless, of course, we see a giant drop in cases, which would be wonderful. And then a lot of this would be changing, we would hope. We'd have fewer cases, consequently, fewer opportunities for a quarantine. Where it is right now, it also impacts staff, because our student, our staff members, not only, even if they're, they're wearing a mask, they will be in close contact with our students, because that's what it takes to be able to sit down next to somebody and help them sometimes, is being within six feet of them for however many minutes it's necessary to help them. And also, our staff have children. And when our staff's children, the children of our staff members need to stay home, consequently, the staff members need to stay home. So it's all very interconnected. It would be awesome if there was one single piece of data that would tell us exactly what we need to do. It doesn't exist. It's all too interconnected for it to be any one thing. So at our last board meeting, we spoke about the idea that on January 10th, we'd move to mask strongly encouraged. On January 24th, we moved for 7/12. January 24th, we moved to mask strongly encouraged for K6. And then also, the CDC order for masking on all transportation has been extended through March. So that order that was going to expire in January now has gone through March. So those are just things that we spoke about at the last board meeting. Things have changed quite a bit since then, and so it's important for us to put all this information on the table.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bergstrom. So I just have a couple of things that I want to share. As we know, that we are under Public Health Madison Dane County Emergency Order 5, so that takes precedence over anything that the board has done. So while we are in that health order, masks are required in all school district buildings. That, the action that the board took on November 22nd is not slated to change anything until January 10th. And so the Public Health Madison Dane County Emergency Order is in place until January 3rd. So as board president, I'm calling a special meeting of the Oregon School District Board for January 3rd, because that is the day the Public Health Dane County Order is scheduled to expire. Now, should they extend their order past January 3rd, then I will have the authority, if I want to, if we don't need to have that meeting, because again, that emergency order takes precedence over anything that we would vote on. But should they allow the order to expire, then the January 3rd meeting would give us time to deliberate and discuss and really talk about all the things that Dr. Bergstrom talked about, which are the data points, all the interconnectedness of the things that we really need to consider as a board as we look to take the next step. So again, just so everybody knows, we will be having a special board meeting on January 3rd, because that still gives us time before anything would change with the school district regarding masks. So I want to make sure the community understands that, and board members, as you know, so that gives us a sense of things are ever-changing. And so, you know, we are sitting here on December 13th, and so that's why I want to have us really look at that January 3rd meeting, because it'll give us a sense as we get closer to doing that. So what I would do right now is ask if anyone has any clarifying questions for Dr. Bergstrom. In order for us to discuss any action-related items that the board would have in terms of discussion, a motion would need to be on the floor. And based on our previous meeting, the only people that could entertain a motion for changing that action are people that voted in favor of the motion on December 20, or November 22nd. So hopefully, that makes sense to people. So again, we would have January 3rd to discuss all this, but certainly someone could make a motion if they wished to reconsider. And again, that would need to be based on parliamentary procedure, someone that voted in favor of that motion. So, I will open the floor now for clarifying questions for Dr. Bergstrom, unless someone's going to put a motion on the floor from Kevin, Tim, or Troy, or myself. So, clarifying questions for Dr. Bergstrom. Okay, go ahead, Kevin.
Thanks for the update, Dr. Bergstrom. You and I had discussed this in a separate discussion, and the thing, obviously, the quarantine rules are what is making a lot of this more challenging. And the question I had, and I'll, you know, let you answer publicly, is why are these other districts not following quarantine? And if it's a law or is it a mandate, why aren't there repercussions for all these other school districts that are not following these quarantine regula, or requirements, mandate, whatever you want to call it? Could you help clarify that, please?
So... The rules around quarantining, I'll say rules with quotations, but what it means to quarantine or what the expectations are related to it, they're coming from the CDC to DHS to public health. Whether or not people are choosing to follow those, I don't know if public health has the, public health has the authority to, I don't know, what would the word be, to censure or impose any consequence on a, on a school district or organization who refuses to require a quarantine for entry? I don't know if they have the authority to do that, but what they have clearly stated here in this county is that telling some, someone they don't have to quarantine, isn't the job of the school district. Those are public health rules that we should be following. If we don't follow, I don't know what the consequence would be, other than potentially more cases within our school. And that's, of course, what we want to avoid. Now, in other parts of the state, there are public health departments who are not being as firm related to the expectations around quarantine, and consequently, some schools and other counties are doing things such as self-quarantine, meaning you are exposed, you can decide if you're going to quarantine or not. So some people are, are doing things a little bit differently. But I would also wonder if that's one of the reasons why we can't seem to get this under control.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting it's right or wrong. All I'm suggesting is, it's obviously closely tied to people missing school potentially.
It is.
And a very large segment of our population, school districts, communities, public health are choosing not to follow this. So it's not a law.
No, it is not.
It's, it's not a requirement either, otherwise it'd be repercussions, I imagine. But maybe, I guess what I'm asking for too, is to clarify what it truly is in Dane County.
Do you mean what term is being used?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if we would call it a rule or a recommendation. I'm not quite sure, because you, you can break a rule too, right?
Yeah, it could be, it could be, it could be a best guideline, best practice, what have you, but
Yes.
Some clarity around that would be interesting, because obviously, other school districts in the state, maybe not this county, but because of mask mandate, don't have that choice. But other school districts are making that choice around the state and around the country.
They are.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Heather.
Just as a follow-up to Kevin's point, the key part of that in the quarantining is for those who are not vaccinated, correct? So...
That is correct.
Not saying that we'll get to 100%, but the more people that we have vaccinated, the fewer people that we have quarantining, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I had that right. I'd like a clarifying question for January 3rd, a request, or if we, if we're meeting, if it comes to that, is how are some other school districts handling strongly recommended masking, or how are they navigating when, you know, when are they going to strongly recommended? When is the point where, oh, too many are quarantining, or staff can't handle it? I guess I just want to understand some guardrails around, you know, whatever this ends up being, how are we going to know if we can't support it, right, from a, from a staffing perspective even? So I'm not expecting an answer now, but I just would like to see that as part of the information for whenever we're talking about it next.
Yeah, and those are some of the things that I would prepare us, you know, we would be prepared to discuss in terms of what are some of those parameters that we look at in terms of specifics. But to Dr. Bergstrom's point, we are not going to look at one. Or that would, that would be something I would not advise as a board, because all of these things are so interconnected. So whether you look at positivity rate, you've got to look at staffing, you've got to look at quarantining, that as a board, we really need to look at the full picture, because this is, it's ever-changing. There are so many pieces to the puzzle. And so I think that's your point though, too, Heather, is that what are the, what are those things that potentially would lead us in one direction or have us pull back? Is that your point? Okay. Go ahead, Troy.
Leslie, could you go back to the quilt slide, please? How, I guess my question on this slide is, how does a student who has a past case of COVID affect the quarantining requirement?
Thank you so much for, for reminding me of that, and I forgot it last time, too. And that is, a student who has already had the virus is exempt from quarantining for 90 days post-infection.
Okay, 90 days. So, okay, so potentially, some of those oranges would turn to blue based on past history of COVID? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think related to that too, it's helpful if you can let us know too, and we've talked about this, is you have students that are self-reporting that they're vaccinated, but what is the check that you all do with the state? So can you kind of talk about that, how you verify vaccination or COVID status in terms of previous case?
Well, I don't know if we would always know whether or not there's a previous, a previous case, because sometimes we don't even know it, you know. But for the most part, some of the previous case pieces would be either self-reporting or a note from the doctor indicating so. But as far as the immunization registry, that is something that is now pulled into infinite campus. So our nurses, not someone like me, but our nurses would be able to see who has a vaccination and who does not.
I cut you off, Troy. Are you done? Sorry. And then Mary. All right, Mary.
The other piece of information that would be very useful is to understand the educator and staff impact, how many have been quarantined based on the universal masking approach, and then how many would have been quarantined, if we can project that out, if it had been masks optional. Just to understand what our, what our impact is likely to be.
On our, Tim, any questions?
I do.
Okay.
So, lots has evolved along this path. One thing that hasn't changed a whole lot is the effects of COVID on kids under 18 years old. The, the percentage of hospitalizations is three places to the right of the decimal in, in most places, and that hasn't changed. And from the very beginning, that it, from what I understand, COVID, although it's transmittable through kids, is not significant to their health if they're under 18. Is that your understanding as well?
Certainly not as significant as it may be to adults or to people in other age categories. I know that there are young people hospitalized in Dane County, so it doesn't mean that there aren't people who are hospitalized over it, but thankfully, we have seen very few deaths across the country. But you're right. I think it's a major point when it's connected to hospital beds and masking in schools, would be transmission to other people in the community who perhaps are even more vulnerable than our kids.
who perhaps are even more vulnerable than our kids.
And so I would expect those more vulnerable are masking when they think it's necessary and are vaccinated when they think it's necessary, whether it's because of some condition or it's just out of personal fear, personal concern for their own health. And again, it continues to, whatever health order is out there, continues to allow those people, whether they're kids in school or adults, or the elderly, or whatever the case may be, still have the option to get vaccinated, get boosters, be masked, and stay home, you know, on the very outside. And so as our numbers continue to increase for vaccinations, and 80%, I think is a good estimation, is that 80% based on the immunization records or based on self-reporting?
It's 78% and 75% for the high school and the middle school based on immunization records.
And so the reason I bring those things up is I hear more and more that this isn't ever going to go away, that COVID is never going to go away. And at some point, we need to learn to live with COVID because we aren't going to extinguish it. And so my concern is, as long as COVID is out there and all of its variants, we, I feel as though we will continue to take this extreme approach if you consider what the rest of the state is doing. And when I say the rest of the state, I'm talking county by county, just as a broad path. Do you see it differently?
I do. The doctors that we speak to in our superintendents' meetings, we've asked this question, right? Because it's very clear that COVID isn't going away, that it will be around. And what they basically said is we'll be able to learn to live with it when, A, our hospitals aren't full, and B, when it's become something where the death toll is significantly less than it currently is. And that's sort of a horrible thing to think about, right? Is that, is there such a thing as an acceptable death toll? I mean, that sounds like a terrible thing to even consider. However, when you're talking about a virus that may be circulating throughout the population for who knows how long, how many decades to come, it really will become a part of whether or not our hospitals are overwhelmed and how many people continue to die from exposure to COVID.
Oops, sorry. And so what it comes down to is we're either going to have people who have been vaccinated or people who have had COVID. That's really what, in the end, however long that takes, we're going to have people who have been vaccinated and people who have had COVID. And it isn't going to change how it affects kids. In my opinion, it isn't going to change in how it affects kids.
Are you asking question, this is clarifying question? So are you making statements or are you asking, Leslie?
No, I'm asking that question.
Okay.
Well, of course, we don't know what the future holds and what kind of variants are out there. But what the other thing that doctors have said repeatedly is that every transmission is another opportunity for a virus to mutate. And so the more transmissions, the more opportunity there would be for more variants. And we don't know at what point our kids would be more susceptible to a future variant. Nobody wants to mask forever, and I certainly wouldn't recommend it. But what I have heard from medical professionals is that we simply aren't there yet because the hospitals are really struggling right now.
Go ahead, Kevin, other questions?
I do have another question. The hospitals, as we know, though, are not full with children, correct?
I don't know the statistics on children in the hospital at the moment. I do believe that public health might have that, and I could look it up.
Yeah, I think it's very rare that a child is having hospitalization. That's actually a national fact and not a local fact as well. I guess the other thing I'd say too is, or the question I would ask is, from your knowledge, you know, and what you read and what you've researched to put all this information together, you know, the hospitalizations, this is the question, the hospitalizations, as far as you know, are mostly vaccinated or unvaccinated?
Unvaccinated.
Okay, so people have had plenty of time to get vaccinated and made that choice and maybe will deal with the consequences. Could you please go back, Leslie, to the slide with the spike on it?
Sure.
I just want to see the scale because I couldn't.
There we go. So I think that last date on the bottom is 11/14. Somebody with, Katie, can you look at it with better eyes than me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And that's cases of all ages?
That's correct. And then the gold is the fully vaccinated and the blue is the not fully vaccinated.
Okay, and it's only Dane County, just to be clear?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, then we have, let's hope for some better things over the next couple of months before we get back together on January 3rd. All right, moving on to Action, see Action Item 2 is Policy 175 Decision-Making Framework. And I believe that is coming as a recommendation as a pilot from Policy and chairperson Anna Biezek.
Thank you, Krista. Yes, so we met in November and reviewed the Policy 175 draft that was presented to our policy committee from the great work that was done from visioning. And I would say as a policy, we had a really great discussion on this and made what I would call fairly minor modifications to the version that came from visioning. There were just a few small language changes. What we decided as a group is to pull the parenthetical pieces of the policy and actually pull them from the policy language but include them as part of the administrative guideline, Appendix A. So you'll see in front of you, you have the Policy 175 language and then the administrative guideline, which is a really great graphic that Erica helped prepare to sort of lay out the way that that would be utilized. And so we felt that that would be the best place for those parenthetical pieces of the policy. And then we made a quick, I guess, a minor change under the Section 175.03.4 Sustainability, where we sort of identified two prongs to that, the first being a non-financial resource cost and then the second prong being the financial impact or budget implication, both short and long term. So we just cleaned that up a little bit. And after talking through it, our policy committee did recommend approval of the Policy 175 with the revisions that are presented before you. And in that matter, I would enter, or I would make a motion to recommend Policy 175 Student-Centered Decision-Making as presented to you this evening.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. I believe it does not require a second because it came from committee. So now I will open the floor for any discussion. Does anyone have any questions? I think all of us have had a chance to, given that it's come through visioning and it's come through policy, it's touched every board member. So it's also touched the administrative team. So if there's no further discussion, I will ask Katie to call the roll.
Ms. Biezek?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison? Mr. Maring?
Yes.
Dr. Lakuta?
Yes.
Mr. Lebrun?
Yes.
Mr. Pankratz?
Yes.
Let's find again.
Yes, motion carries, 7-0. Moving on to Action Item 3, Acceptance of the June 30, 2021 Audit Report. And I believe that is yours, Andy.
Thank you. Got a printed copy for yourself here at the board table. Just wanted to go over a couple parts of the materials that are presented here. It's also electronically in your packet. We did have a, just a real quick summary that the auditors put together, just some interesting information regarding kind of some comparisons, pie charts, that type of thing, that you can look at kind of at your perusal. We'll go over some of the information in just a minute. The other thing is a little bit thicker of a document, it's called, it used to be called the Management Letter. Essentially, it's if there were any concerns that the auditors had, they would put them in here. Pretty much it's gotten to just kind of some qualifications and stuff that they want you to know about their processes. Kind of more of a, just an overall how they go about it as well as kind of how far in-depth they went. The new thing that was included this year is there are some journal entries that happened after the books were closed by CARA. Not very many, but a few. And that's mostly all because the information was not known at the time that we kind of pushed the button and came in afterwards. So nothing concerning there at all. All the numbers that I've shared with you in the past, both at the annual meeting and prior to the annual meeting, are all the same numbers. So nothing's really changed. When we get into the actual document, a little bit thicker of a document, obviously the bound version here, the most important part from auditors, and they, again, keep changing the word a little bit, used to be a qualified or non-qualified and all that kind of stuff. Right now, on page double I, it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above are presented fairly in all material respects." And then it kind of goes on with a little bit of a run-on sentence with that. And then also the last sentence on that page says basically the same stuff. "In our opinion, other supplemental information is also fairly stated in material respects." So that's about as good as you're going to get these days from auditors for this. So just wanted to share that information with you. And the other thing I'll share with you in this bound copy, and please, there's lots of footnotes and information in it. So if you have questions, I'm not going to go through it all tonight unless you really want me to. But I will tell you that there's kind of an interesting component to it in that there's almost two sets of numbers in there, which usually is a bad sign. But there is a set of numbers that GASB, the Governmental Accounting Standards Bureau, asks us to, or asks the auditors to put together. And it deals with kind of the overall financial situation of the district but includes a couple things that we don't typically include. One is depreciation, which is very commonplace for businesses, that type of thing. And so that's helpful because it tells you whether your school district or your municipality is investing in additional capital and kind of keeping things updated. Other thing is not as helpful unless you're kind of looking at from the financial situation of somebody wanting to invest in a school district or something, or sell bonds. And that's a pension cost. And the reason why that's not as helpful is because we have no control over it. So I will pull your attention to this document called the Statement of Net Positions, which is on page 1. And this is a document that is so kind of out there that there's actually a page that reconciles with the numbers that we actually use, which is kind of goofy. And that's a little bit further in. But these numbers both have depreciation in them, and you can kind of see that. And then if you go down probably about 2/3 of the way through, there's this thing called net pension asset. So we are blessed in the state of Wisconsin to have a very strong pension fund. And basically, because that pension fund is over 100% funded at this point in time, we get to count $11,179,304 on our balance sheet. Didn't do anything about that because there's a strong economy, and essentially that's there. If, at the end of this year, the stock market would tank, whatever, that could disappear, or it could become a negative, or it could become even a larger number. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. Anytime you're looking at the statement of net position, it's really kind of out of our control. And so I spend my time looking at the governmental funds portion of the audit because that's kind of more what we can control to the degree that we can control this. Is there any questions about that? Tim?
So this net pension asset showing up at $11 million plus?
Correct.
What was it last year?
Oh, that's a great question. Not that much, but it was still positive. I want to say it was, this is from memory, so 3 million or something like that.
So it's a significant difference this year?
Yeah, yeah.
And was this line item on here last year?
Yes, for this schedule. For this schedule, right.
Okay.
So again, kind of two sets of books, the statement of net position and then the governmental funds. The governmental funds are then broken into a couple different components, the business funds as well as the other funds that we kind of run the district with. But I just wanted to point this out. So if you're trying to reconcile these two, if you actually go a couple pages in to page 5, it actually tries to reconcile the two between each other. So it's the reconciliation of governmental fund balance sheet to the statement of net position. Because this is so confusing, they actually came up with another schedule that allows you to tie the two out. So I don't know if I ever shared that with you, but I felt like tonight was the night to do that.
Especially being so positive.
Right.
Absolutely.
Exactly. So, and again, it might be useful to bondholders and that type of thing, but it's not as useful to us. So, you bet.
So are those funds that we can spend?
No. The Employee Trust Fund tells us what number to put into this audit. Yep, so. Right, and a proportion of the entire state. So as the, as our, as long as our pension is fully funded, it'll be close to zero or larger if it's overfunded, which it is right now simply because the returns have been so well, so great over the last several years. Or if we were just a little bit below, there could be actually a liability there. And the reason, I was talking to the auditor about this the other day, the reason they put this in here is the majority of state pension funds are not in this position. So it's kind of an anomaly. Usually that's a negative that shows up. And that's why GASB wanted people to know that there was kind of this unfunded liability out there a little bit. But they didn't realize that the state of Wisconsin had such a well-run fund and what ramifications that would have.
And so again, this is an allocation. It is not our actual benefits. It is an allocation on a per member, a per educator.
A percentage of how many employees are in the pension system from Oregon School District compared to the rest of the state.
Okay, it's our allocation.
Right, I'm not exactly sure how they divvy that out, but I'm sure there's a process to do that. So not on our balance, not in our bank accounts or anywhere near us. It's just an indication, basically, the financial health of the pension fund. So that being said, I'll just kind of hit some high points for the school district over the last year. So you see kind of assets, minus liabilities, equal fund balances, the accounting equation that we talk about, right? So here's the kind of comparison year to year. So our total assets have gone up. You would expect that. We've talked about a $1 million increase in fund balance. But our assets totally have gone up a little bit more than the $1 million. Accounts payable and all those liabilities that are there also went up a little bit. So our fund balance went up just right around $1 million. So from 14,2 to 15,2, if you see that line. So that's how that worked. Again, if we're going to just look at the general fund and the special education fund, those are our two main operating funds. Everything else is kind of on its own, but those two are interrelated to each other because if, at the end of the year, the special education fund does not have enough revenue to pay for itself, so there has to be a transfer, so they're joined at the hip. So if you look at those two funds, again, our budget showed perhaps a $3 million reduction because of carryover. That was that $1.5 million carryover that we had for COVID because we didn't know what was going to happen last year before we got the federal help and this food service program kind of got some help as well. As well as the normal carryovers from the buildings, we had anticipated about $3 million reduction. Instead, we got a $1 million increase, and we've talked about that in the past. I will point out that that other financing source, that 242-782, is the sale of this property on the west side that we talked about a couple times. And it still is not assigned, so it's kind of just sitting out there. So if we want to assign that, we should make a process to do that. But in this budget, it's not assigned. No, no, it's just not going to be in this document, but, you know, we can catch it up later. So then here are those different components of the fund balance that we just talked about. Non-spendable fund balance, there are some accounts payable type stuff, some inventory in there. And then the other component, the majority of that non-spendable fund balance is the land purchase for a one-school construction house over by Anna's place, a house. So we still own a lot over there that we can build on. We've just been working with Tim O'Brien Homes for a while. And then we have restricted for self-insurance, that is for Delta. I'm sorry, I said Delta, that is for dental. Yeah, it is Delta Dental. So that's our dental insurance program. And we actually increased our maximum benefit last year by $1,000 because the prior year, all the dental offices shut down in March. offices shut down in March, and they weren't able to do any procedures. So we felt like it would be fair to give our employees an extra amount of money so that if they had to catch up, since the dental offices are now open. And even though doing, even though we did that, and we held the premium at the same dollar amount as it was the prior several years, we still actually increased fund balance, or restricted self-insurance balance by about a little over, right around $30,000. So fund is very healthy. I don't see us increasing fund premiums for that, for anything in the near future. I'd actually like to see that number kind of, our expenses go up a little bit more than our revenues a little bit to know that things are kind of being, getting in line. Assigned fund balance, so that's our things that we've talked about for carryover purposes. So that's that $2.5 million that we've been talking about, as well as departmental and building carryover. And then unassigned fund balance, that's what we would use kind of to decide, hey, if everybody spends their assigned fund balance allocations, what would we have left over? And that's used for basically cash flow purposes from year to year. So it did go up a little bit, but that's because that $242,000 is in there. So if you take that out, it only went up about $30,000 or $40,000. Okay? And then the other thing that we typically do with this, with this presentation is we talk a little bit at percentages. And so this is also in your packet, and it's per board policy that we do this calculation. I will also say, and it says it in the agenda item, the percentages are a little different when the auditor picks. The auditor picks the next year's budget, and they use unassigned fund balances. So you'll see 17% in their thing. That's because they're using a larger denominator in their calculation than we have by policy used. So maybe we want to change that at some point in time, but we try to use the same numbers in the calculation. So, but, and these are all done consistently. So you can, they're a good comparison for each other. So you can see with total fund balance, so everything that we have in the fund balance, unassigned and assigned, we're at about 29% this last year. But if you take out the assigned amount, we're closer to 20%. And we've been dropping a little bit, kind of over the last five years or so. Up a little bit, I guess, a couple of years ago, but then kind of down a little bit. So, yeah.
So we're dropping, I get that. Is there, and if you said this, I'm sorry, just taking it all in, is there a percentage that is like the goal or the gold standard, or where we'd like to be?
Yes. So our board policy specifically talks about cash flow purposes. So, and that's actually recommended by the Department of Public Instruction. I want to blow our own horn that our policy committee actually came up with that before the DPI came up with it as a recommendation. So doesn't happen very often, but that was, that was nice. And that was always our goal, is so that we don't need to go borrow funds to just meet bills. So at some point in time, if we use the assigned amounts, so those carryover amounts, if those were to be used entirely, it would get a little close, and it's going to continue to get closer because our spending levels have continued to increase, and our dollar amounts, our fund balance hasn't, and that's what's having a problem with that percentage. Now, that is totally a function of cash flow. So I'll tell you, the state actually did one thing that helped us this last budget, and they used to, years ago, their financial position was in a, not as good, strong position as it is now. And so they were telling us, or they actually passed a law and said, hey, we're going to give you some of your state aid money after your fiscal year's over, but we'll tell you how much we're going to give you, but we're not going to give it to you in the fiscal year. So they actually corrected that. And so that actually helped us by a couple hundred thousand from a cash flow perspective, which was nice. But, so those things can happen. The other thing I'll share with you is, and I think I've shared with you before, is we are becoming more property-rich, our school district is, on a per-student basis, and we're outpacing the rest of the state. So our funds are starting to come more from property taxes than state. Property tax revenue doesn't come in at all until January. So our low month is kind of the end of November, December-ish. And so we're going to have to have a little bit more cash balance as we go down that path, if we continue to go down that path. So nothing to worry about too much right now. I'm just sharing with you kind of a trend that's happening.
Yep. I get all of that, and that makes sense, and thank you for that. Is there, not to peg you to a number, but is there a number where you would like, say, I hope that as a district, we could be at X percentage on a regular basis?
You know, we're right about where we, where I would say we should be right now. You know, if you ask me five more years down the road, and we continue to be much more property-rich per student, that number, though, could move up to like 25%, simply because we're relying more on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions for Andy? Go ahead, Troy.
Andy, you often talk about our dual-income family. And looking at page X, we've got the breakdown of kind of where our income comes from, where our revenue comes from. And I guess I'd just like you to help the community understand the column on the far right, the other column. Over the past 10 years, that has increased, you know, not insignificantly. It's gone from 2% up to, we're at 9.1%. So what drives that other column?
So I'm kind of just looking at this. I would say part of that is federal dollar increases. Let me think of this here. Total governmental revenues, yeah. So I think part of that would be federal increases. We've had increases both in special education funding, as well as the SER funds. I'm actually surprised that it's not a little bit larger, but the majority of the SER funds haven't been claimed yet. The largest component of that's a $1 million in SER III, and we haven't claimed a penny of that yet.
Okay. And that was, that was a follow-up question, actually, because I was surprised that that number wouldn't be higher this year.
Right, right. And that's simply because we just haven't, honest, I think I shared with you at some point in time, the SER III just got approved, I think, last week. We were the last state in the United States to have our, approved.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Other questions for Andy? I just have one, because SER III was one of my questions, but there was also some comments in here about leases. So can you kind of explain that comment in here?
So I think if it's that one page, I think it's just kind of a, an FYI type of thing, a required communication that they have, but if you could point me to what exactly you're looking at.
Just was looking, I mean, they just made a comment in terms of just recognizing that more in here. Do we have significant lease agreements?
No.
I guess I was just kind of, that's the first time I've seen it in a while, and so I just was curious about that.
I am an anti-lease person. We don't actually lease our copiers or anything. We purchase them out and then run them until they die. That's the way I handle my cars. That's the way I handle my copiers. The only thing that we, the only thing that we had a lease for was actually the scoreboard in the, in here. And that's because we had solicited donations to pay for that over five years. So that is really, I'm trying to think if we have any other leases for anything. That was really the only thing we had. So I'm not a big lease person. I've always have felt like you're just paying somebody else to deal with your cash flow problem. So.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Andy? Go ahead, Tim.
We've talked about it before. Each year, we talked about it, Andy.
Yep.
About looking at different auditors.
Yeah.
Not because we, not because we're doing anything wrong. We seem to always get glowing reports. But having different eyes.
Sure.
Might help us grow in some way, in a positive way. Are we, what are we doing to work our way toward a new set of eyes?
Yeah. So last year, we actually went through the RFP process, and these guys were low. So we did bring that to you guys, and we have another three-year contract. So we are with them for another two years.
Okay.
At the end of that, we can definitely go with RFP again.
And so just out of curiosity, what does an audit cost? Just give me a range.
Oh, shoot. I'm going to say $16,000, $15,000, $16,000.
And so when we went to an RFP?
Yep.
And Johnson Black?
It was like a $1,000 or $2,000 difference. It wasn't much. It wasn't much at all.
I just think, coming from the banking business, it's worth maybe even spending $1,000 or $2 more with the hopes of getting some little nugget that our comfortable relationship hasn't been able to ferret out. That's all.
Yep. I totally understand what you're saying.
So it's more of an observation than a question.
Yep.
All right. Hearing none. Katie, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Pinkerets?
Yes.
Mr. LeBrun?
Yes.
Ms. Bijak?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Mr. Mary?
Yes.
Dr. LaCouda?
Yes.
Ms. Flanagan?
Yes. Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you to you and Cara. It's a, it's a big undertaking to go through the audit, and you guys have really done well in terms of the reports over the years. So please pass along our thanks to her, and thank you, Andy, for shepherding this. All right. Moving on to D, discussion items. We are now into committee reports. Policy, Anna.
Policy is, we are not going to hold our December meeting, so that has been canceled, but we will resume the third Monday in January. So at this point, I really have nothing more to report.
You guys have had a busy fall. Thank you, Anna. Vision steering, Troy.
Yeah, we met last Tuesday, and we covered two items, Portrait of a Graduate update and the recreational spaces study. We are going to be canceling our January meeting that we would have in, I think it'd be about five weeks from now, but with, right after the holidays, we're going to cancel that, and we will come together again in February.
Great. Thank you. Next is Worth Woods. Tim?
We've had a number of meetings since the last time we got together. Most recently, we had what I would consider a very fruitful meeting with the folks at Fitchburg. We learned some things about the property that we have, the environmental center, as well as the Worth Woods property. And it is, we are working in a direction, again, that doesn't have to adjust our zoning, because curiously, our meeting at Fitchburg let us know that the zoning we are in, there is the right zoning for what we want to accomplish, which is a great, it's a great thing for our environmental center and a cost that will happily bypass. We are also working with a local architect to, we've been talking with him about recreating the environmental center on paper. We don't have any records of the facility that we have there, and before we can make any changes to it, we need to understand what we have. And so we've been working with an architect and talking with him about that. One thing I do want to mention, in our budget conversation, I just want to remind people that $200,000 that is sitting out there from our sale of our property over on Alpine is definitely something we should be considering, all or a portion of that, in investing in another property that the district owns. And the environmental center in Worth Woods would be a great option. So I just float that out there. I'm not looking for any action on that, but I want to keep reminding people that it is currently unassigned, and that isn't going to be forever. So when it comes up, I hope it's coming out of my mouth. We are expecting a, the strategic plan for the environmental center in Worth Woods in January. And so we've got a few more meetings before that takes place, but it is all coming together nicely. Any questions about the Worth Woods or the environmental center?
Who's preparing that strategic plan for the environmental center, or for the property itself?
The committee that has been put together. We actually have three subcommittees that roll up to the committee that was formed, and that committee will deliver that for approval to the board.
All right. Thanks, Tim. Wellness committee, Heather.
Yep. Anna and I attended last week, and I just wanted to say thanks to Sarah T. for her leadership, and there were a number of people from, staff from a variety of schools. We hit three major topics and learned some things, so I thought I'd pass along some of the information. The first topic was on food insecurity, and we discussed data on national and local averages. And just as a point of reference, 16.63% of our school district, which is 653 kids, qualify for free reduced lunch per federal guidelines in OSD. Obviously, this year is much different with the federal program that breakfast and lunch is provided for all, but just a good, good thing to learn about. And lunch and breakfast numbers, as we've talked about, are up, but hard to say if that's coming from, you know, that it's provided, or, you know, other factors. The second part I knew just a little bit about, but was happy to learn more about the AmeriCorps Food to Table program, and their focus on procuring local items, and their work with Hydroponic Gardens in the school district. There has been some really great success with providing local beef in the lunch, lunches for the last two months, and they're working on a local yogurt. So I think they're committed to continuing to look at that. And then the nursing provided updates, that they are working on increasing free menstrual products in the older kids bathrooms. They reported out on bridging brighter smiles, which is a free dental cleaning onsite two times per year at buildings throughout the district. They work with translators as needed, and it's also really great because no transportation or missed school is needed for kids who qualify for free, these free cleanings. And they also work, if the child needs additional work beyond cleaning, they figure out a free and reduced cost. And OSD has been a part of this program since 2016, and this fall, we served 34 kids. So just some tidbits on wellness. We meet next in May.
Thank you. Thank you for those updates. It's a really great committee, and there's just a lot of really good news and good things that are happening through that committee. So thank you for that report. Okay. Moving on to D2, mental health survey results. I'll turn that over to Dr. Bergstrom.
Thank you. About a month or so ago, we shared the spring results, and then we were re-administering our survey this fall, and now I have some results to share with you from that. So as you can see here, these are the things, these are the skills and attributes and dispositions that we are trying to measure via this survey. And you can see that they are all important components of social emotional learning, which is really about the idea of ensuring every child is ready to learn, right? Whether it's because they feel a strong sense of belonging to their school, they feel physically and psychologically safe, they know how to regulate their own emotions, they know how to set goals and achieve them. It's all very well-aligned to the work in Portrait of a Graduate also. So these are the components that, you know, we really think of as foundational, because when we're doing well here, our students are performing at their best academically also. So these are the issue, or these are the skills, attributes, knowledge, dispositions that we would be measuring. And here is what the results from this fall look like. So where you see a green dot, that is where we, as a school district, were in the 40th percentile or above. And I would say most of our green dots put us in the 80th to 90th percentiles nationally. This is a nationally-normed survey. So you can see there's a lot of really good things to be very happy about related to our district and how well our students are doing in these important skills and dispositions and attitudes and sense of knowledge. We also can see that there are some areas that were marked orange, and orange means that they're below the 40th percentile. And I think that those are things that we really need to spend some time and attention on, because all of these pieces are really important to our students and their overall well-being. And it's also important to think that, looking at each grade as a singular strand, sometimes from year to year, it's like apples to oranges, right? It's different cohorts of kids. So I think it's also, as we get more data and move on in time, looking at a cohort and how they do over time, I think will also tell us quite a bit. For example, in the spring, grade six was in the orange for social awareness. And now grades seven through eight is in the orange for social awareness. So it just makes you wonder, is there a grade seven cohort piece that we should be looking at as an example? So that's where we are right now in the fall, and that really influences how we plan our goals as schools, because we have our academic goals, but we also have our goals related to students and their social emotional wellness. So most of our schools right now are focusing on developing a stronger sense of belonging within their school. Now, every school has an action plan related to this particular goal. goals as schools, because we have our academic goals, but we also have our goals related to students and their social emotional wellness. So most of our schools right now are focusing on developing a stronger sense of belonging within their school. Now, every school has an action plan related to this particular goal, but some of the things that I see as strands all the way through, utilization of the Second Step curriculum, and we've spoken about that a little bit in the past, the addition of the Character Strong curriculum for our older students, which is very similar to Second Step but adjusted for them as older people. Of course, our student services supports, right? Because any student who doesn't feel like they belong in school oftentimes also needs additional student services reports, or supports. And then opportunities to connect through school, through co-curriculars, too. Now, this is not an exhaustive list. As I said, every school has an action plan. These are just some of the things that all of our schools are talking about or thinking about. And in connection to valuing of school, that's an interesting one, and it's really about how kids are connecting with school as far as how they see its importance to themselves and their life. And so some of the things that we are doing, that I think over time, there's no magic answer to this, but over time will help, is certainly our academic and career planning, right? Which is a state initiative that we have been integrating for the last couple of years, and it's about making sure that kids are making the connection between what they're doing at school and what they might be interested in doing when they're done with high school. And then how do we help them along the way, be thinking about that and putting together experiences that prepare them for the things that they might be interested in, without actually making them narrow into something that is perhaps too much of a focus when you're only 16 years old, and things could change, too, right? So it's kind of a balance, walking between those two things. I also think that the work being done at the high school and the middle school, connected to a program called Authentic Intellectual Work, will be of significant help in increasing valuing of school, because it's about teachers from various disciplines coming together to use a rubric developed at UW-Madison to examine the learning that they're putting in front of the students through this rubric. And one of the areas on the rubric is relevance outside of school. So as teachers are coming together to co-examine the works they're putting together, that's one of the things they're talking about. How do we help students see the connection between what we're asking them to do and what they might need to do once school is over? So sometimes it's not an easy thing to connect with, and you're talking to a person who taught world history for 10 years. And so I had a hard time sometimes helping kids understand the connection between the class and what they were doing. And very often, the content is quite important, but it's also helping kids learn to be really thorough and critical thinkers through the content. That is most important. And then we'll be administering this survey again in the spring. The maker of the survey says you should be able to see gains, but don't expect increases of like 20%. You know, that it is something that you need to build over the course of time.
All right, questions for Dr. Bergstrom. Go ahead, Anna.
I just want to clarify what you mean by the 40th percentile or 80th percentile. What is that percentile gauging, as far as a comparison to other schools, or, so, can you kind of elaborate a little bit on that? What does it mean to be below the 40th percentile or in the 80th percentile?
This survey is nationally normed, and they're looking at the number of students who respond favorably within your school. And then you compare that to other schools across the nation, and you get a percentile ranking. So as I mentioned, our green dots are for the most part in the highest category, the 80 to 99th percentile range.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Oops, sorry, it's me.
There we go. Along the same lines, is there a category in between? It's quite a jump from 80 to 40 percentile.
I agree. But it doesn't, it says green, 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 orange. So it takes you in a couple of different green areas, like the 80 to 90th, the 40, or the 60 to 80, the 40 through 60, but they're all green, right? They're all considered positive, and then it moves to orange. So it goes in about 20 percentage points each time.
In terms of, in terms of value in school, you know, how, what kind of programs we have in place, and we don't have to get in specifics, but just in general, for students to get connected with business owners or other professionals in the community, because, and the follow-up question to that is, has that been restricted, I would imagine, because of COVID? So these kids aren't experiencing these for the last two, three years, I would imagine.
That's an awesome question. Some of the things that have been restricted are things like perhaps at the middle school level, when there would be a giant forum at, I used to call it the Coliseum, what do we call it now?
Oh, I answered it.
Thank you. Okay, so there'd be the giant, where all these employers would be, and the whole middle school would go. Those kinds of things have been restricted. However, our school-to-work program has not been restricted, and we've had, and continue to have, a lot of high school kids involved in that. That would be an excellent follow-up presentation, actually, to make sure that everybody on the board is fully aware of the opportunities the kids have through that program.
Yeah, I know, we could do some really cool things with liquid nitrogen, with, get people excited about science at our place, so. Yes, and we'll use all safety precautions, too.
Tim, did you have a question?
The, I'm focusing on valuing of school as well, and I can only refer to that as the, when am I ever going to use this, as an adult part of my life? And so, again, because it's a nationally normed survey, what do you think has led us to this? Because there are, it's nationally normed, and so there are lots of schools in 80-plus. What do you think? What's your best guess on what has led us to, in six, in all of those grade levels, not just in one of them?
I don't have the answer right now, but what might help us is if we think about what are the actual questions that our students are asked? That will help. So, hold on, this might be a glasses-required thing. How interesting, these are the five questions. How interesting do you find things you learn in your classes? How often do you use ideas from school in your daily life? How important is it to you to do well in your classes? That one was an 84% responded favorably. That one was actually quite high. Next one, how much do you see yourself as someone who appreciates school? How useful do you think school will be to you in the future? So those are the five questions that comprise a valuing of school score. So why or how do I think we got here? I'm not sure, but it says important to do well? That's very high. The lowest one on here is only 15% responded favorably. How often do you use ideas from school in your daily life? So I don't know why that one would be so low, but I do think that there are ways to significantly influence that in a positive way. And one of the things I mentioned was ACP, Academic and Career Planning, and the other is, as I mentioned, the Authentic Intellectual Work. And, you know, teachers coming together to talk about, how do we be explicit about how this helps you later on? Because when you're, when you're that old, those connections aren't always easy to make.
Kevin, did you have a follow-up to that point?
Yeah, just real quick, I think maybe there's a way, too, to educate parents or help them explain to their kids how it's important. I mean, I'm a math and science geek, so my kids get, you know, mad at me while I'm talking about, you know, Pythagorean Theorems and things like that, but it might be something, some kind of resource that we could do there, so.
Yeah, just to point, Mary, you're next, but just to point to that, I was wondering, too, if, how are we connecting this to parents? Is there value in us having these, I mean, what are we hearing from parent-teacher conferences? Are parents attending parent-teacher conferences, and I know these are confidential surveys, but is there a connection based on feedback, teachers are hearing from parents, or conversations they're having with parents, and does that correlate, to Kevin's point, to a valuing of school, if that's not being heard or being voiced to us from the home? And not saying that we have a lot of impact on that, but it could help explain some of it. So just to kind of piggyback on what you're saying, is there a connection that we can start making some of those things based on our interactions with families? Mary, go ahead.
Thank you. So are they the same questions across all of the age groups? They don't change?
The 3-5 survey is a little bit different, but in a question like that, it would be a very minimal change from that age group to the next.
And then it was nationally normed, is it across all public and private schools? Just public schools?
It would be schools who utilize this particular survey tool. So it would be both, I imagine.
Okay. And then are there different colors of green, or is it just green? Because 40 seems an odd, you know, the 40th percentile just seems an odd cutoff.
I agree, but no, there's not shades or anything, it just, but it's just sort of like, really good, be concerned. And I'm making those headings up, but that's what it looks like.
Is there anything lower than 40?
There is not.
Okay. Wow.
Mary, do you have any other questions? You're good. Okay. Go ahead, Heather.
I really appreciate the insight on the questions that went into the orange, because that really helped me think about that, and not to say that it's all because the kids might not be understanding, but it seems like perhaps there's some disconnect of understanding the value. I'm hoping that in the spring, when you show this, if you could help me out, and maybe we could have like a last year, or a last survey column next to this year, just, or this, sorry, fall versus spring, and then if I could be so high-maintenance, maybe we could get the number in the dot, because I think that would help all of us who are like, is green 80 or is green 40? And I think it would just help us understand kind of how green we really are.
Thank you for that. This was meant to be super high-level. But in February, when we have a more comprehensive mental health update, we can take a look at this data in addition to Dane County Youth Assessment data. Because if you remember, when we spoke about Dane County Youth Assessment, our students, the percentage responding favorably into questions related to belonging at school was really high. So I found that to be a super interesting contrast, right? Why was it so high in the Dane County Youth Assessment? And then we look here, and we're in the 40th or lower percentile. So those are all questions that I think that we can talk more about when we get the big picture in front of all of you, and we can take a look at that in February.
Well, that'll also help inform, as we look at staffing, budgeting, you look at annual goals, we build our strategic plan in Portrait of a Graduate. I mean, this is all related to what kind of trends or what are the data, what's the data telling us in terms of what we need to focus on? Anna, go ahead.
One quick question. Do we know how many schools? Are we even?
That, I don't have that answer with me now, but I can get it easily. As a matter of fact, I have a feeling that Erica will probably look it up as we speak, because, because she's very good at that. I'll let you know as soon as I do.
Kevin?
Sorry, I might have missed this, but when exactly was the survey done?
It depends on the grade level, but it would be anywhere from the end of October to mid-November.
Just recently.
Just recently.
Yeah, can I go, Krista? So just to follow up on Honest Question, I mean, this is, so it's nationally normed, but it's only based on the schools that administer this survey. So Oregon puts a high emphasis on mental health, and not every, not every school is at, you know, the point in the journey that we are at. So I think that certainly plays into how we scored on this, correct? It's not necessarily, of all, of all schools across the country, it's just of the schools that administer the survey. So just to confirm that I have that correct.
You are right. Thank you.
Okay, great. It's just another piece of data that we can look at and really should inform our decision-making, both, you know, in terms of staff and leadership and the board. So thank you. Appreciate that. Good questions, everyone. Okay, moving on to E1, Spring Election. So, a couple of things I want to mention as part of this upcoming election, if we would have a primary, it would be February 15th, but the general election is on April 5th. We do have three seats that are up for election. The first is Village of Oregon, and there are two seats, which is Anna and myself. And so this is the last year of getting the board on a different cycle. And so with that election, the person in that election who gets the most votes gets a three-year term, the person that gets the second-most votes will get a one-year term. And then the other office that is up is City of Fitchburg and related municipalities, and that's Kevin's seat. So, again, there were three seats in total, so there's kind of been a change in terms of notice of non-candidacies, so I'm going to let board members give an indication if they want to tonight or not, if they are running for reelection or not. So Kevin, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I understand the deadline to be December 24th, but I'll make sure it's the 22nd, so someone's not working on the day off, but at this point, I'm still undecided.
Okay, great. Anna?
I am planning to run again, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve our district and families. That's all I have to say about it.
Okay, great. And because Anna is running for reelection, and she is the clerk, I just want to make some points and make sure people are clear. For decades in this district, the executive assistant to the superintendent has administered elections. It was Janie Wick for years, and now it's been Katie who's done an amazing job. So I just want to make sure that that's clear, that Katie is really our election official. And because Anna is running for reelection, the clerk really only has the duty of running the canvassing meeting, so I've asked Tim to run that for Anna, because she is a candidate, and Tim has agreed to do that, so I want to thank Tim for doing that. I also will be seeking reelection in this election. So just want to make sure we had those points clear, and look forward to a new election season. All right, moving on to E2, Vision and Strategic Planning. Dr. Bergstrom?
Wonderful. All right, so we've seen this before, and we are making some really excellent progress, everybody, because we are to the... This will be one of the first things that we talk about, is getting some input on Portrait of a Graduate. And then I am sure that our students will have a lot of things that they'll want to talk about, and I'll be excited to be on that journey with them.
Do you want to talk about that council just quick again? You bet. Because I wasn't on, I want to make sure people understand what you're doing.
Yeah.
It's great.
So I'm really excited, and it's because, you know, I think in this role, the more time you get to spend with students, I think the more effective you actually are in serving them overall, right? So I'm excited for this opportunity to spend some time with our high school students. We'll be talking about three students per grade, nine through 12, and if we have a lot more applicants, then we'll find another way to include more, because it's really about making sure that people who want to have input have an opportunity to do so. And we'll be meeting once a month, and we'll talk about things related to how the school district works and what types of processes are in place, but mostly, it will be about them being able to talk to me about what's important to them, and how we can work together to make sure that we're continuing to make the school a place that they feel really proud of. And I'm excited for it. It'll be one of the most fun things I do every month, I bet you.
Go ahead, I think Kevin has a quick question.
Yeah, this, this is somewhat maybe related, but the student service rep on the board, where does, where does that stand?
That is going to be part of superintendent's council. So we'll do some rotation with those members here. So then this is just really a summary of what I ended up talking about a little bit. So you see the focus group participant video will go out this week, staff is ongoing, student council information, we'll be getting some applications in in the next couple of weeks, I hope, and then we'll send it out to the broader community after winter break. Then I'll move forward. We spent some time tonight already talking about mental health and wellness. That was the survey, the results of the survey. Healthy students and staff, that was our discussion related to the ever-shifting landscape of COVID. And then teaching and learning, we have to make sure that every time we're together, we're spending an, spending our time, our opportunity, making sure we talk about that a little bit. And one of the things that I wanted to bring up is some of the really amazing things that are happening in our classrooms. These amazing things are happening in every classroom across the district. I think that people would be really proud to walk into any one of our classrooms and listen to our students and hear them talk about their learning. But for tonight, I'd like to put a spotlight on the two middle school educators, Chris Mitchell and Nate Marr, who recently were awarded Energy Educators of the Year. And there have been a couple of different news stories on what they do and how they help students think differently about the world around them. And then I also want to note that when the reporter was there, these two teachers... these two teachers who are always thinking about relevance, asked the reporter to talk to the students about their job and what it was important and what's important to be a reporter, what type of skills you have to have, et cetera. So, I do think that our teachers are continually looking for ways to bring relevance into all of our kids' learning experiences. But I know that as a district, we're very proud of all of the teachers, and this is a great example of the cool things that are happening. Then I'll just move right into this, if that's all right. So, oregonsd.org backslash talk. You've seen that go out in a couple of different parent communications, and I wanted to put a little bit of a highlight on it. This is a webpage that has numerous resources on topics that parents are often looking for resources on how to have challenging conversations, whether it's violence in the news or it's online safety. These are resources that have been vetted, and we put them out there for our parents, because we know that those conversations can be challenging. And sometimes, it's helpful as a parent to take a look at some resources from experts before you sit down and have the conversation. So, we wanted to make sure everybody knew that was out there for them. And we'll continue to update it as good resources come out. And the next thing is, when it comes to school safety, one of the most important things anyone, any of us can do as an educator is develop positive relationships with the students. Because with positive relationships come better communication. And when students have worries or they hear things that make them concerned, when they have a trusted adult at school, they can go to that trusted adult. However, we know that sometimes, students would much rather share their concern anonymously, and that's okay too. And we have this resource for them if that's what they would like to do. Because the most important point is if you see something, say something, right? So, this is from the Department of Justice called Speak Up, Speak Out, Wisconsin. It's monitored continuously. And Andy's been doing quite a bit of work on it in the past couple of weeks just to make sure that it's up and running and available for student use. Is there anything you'd like to say about it, Andy?
Nope, we just can't use say something, see something, because it's actually patented by the federal government. So, Wisconsin had to come up with something different, but this works very well. And I think it's actually been used a few times already this year.
Go ahead, Heather.
So, you can, you can't text. That's the only thing. You have to either use their app, which they have an app you can download, a website, or there is a phone number, and all three are continuously monitored. So, and it's pretty much anonymous. The concern is that if somebody was thinking of taking their life or something like that, the first responders would want to be able to react to that. So, I think there is some information that's provided and location. But other than that, it's just a way for people to be able to share information. Our administrators also have accounts. So, if there was something, depending on the severity that is assessed by a company called P3, is the company that's behind the scenes, then they will call local police department and immediately and have them dispatched to wherever they need to go. If it's something that's a little bit more like, hey, we can look into this tomorrow or something like that, then it might be more of an email that goes to the administrator or something, so. Or the, or the person will be redirected to maybe an appropriate way to get help.
So, the school district is, or admin is looped in as this company, P3 directs it appropriately?
Yep.
Got it, thanks.
We also want to say congratulations to Alex Rodriguez. He is, was selected for the all-fall Great Lakes Region team, and that's quite an accomplishment. So, congratulations, Alex. Also, wanted to point out that our athletic director, Brittany Spencer Grant, was just at a conference, a WIAA conference, the Sportsmanship Summit. And she took to the summit with her Will Cram, who's representing swim, Basabe Ramos, who's from cheer, Sam Schmidt from basketball, and Tyler Wald from wrestling. So, happy that we were represented at the Sportsmanship Summit. And this is just one of the many ways Brittany is working to involve our students. And then, finally, I think you've all seen a few news articles on this too. And that is Forest Edge Elementary is the 2021 climate champion. There was a ceremony and a tour on Saturday, December 4th, at Forest Edge. Andy gave a really nice acceptance speech and took a group of people on a tour of Forest Edge to show them all of our energy-saving features. So, many thanks to all of the people who made that happen, which is really an extraordinarily forward-thinking school board and a super supportive community. Without those two things, we wouldn't be able to put this together for our students, right? And for our students and their future, their learning now and their future by being a sustainable energy school. So, pretty great stuff. And finally, this might take a second to load here. There we go. We wanted to say thank you to our vaccine clinic volunteers, because we had to have volunteers for every one of the stations where students were vaccinated, and there were 16 stations in addition to other roles that people filled. But that meant 16 health professionals had to volunteer to be here for several hours after many of them had already worked all day long. And they were, if you, if you hear Gina talk about it, they were just really, really wonderful. Super patient, very few children go up and just bravely stick out their arm. That isn't the way it goes for the majority of kids. So, it takes a lot of patience and care and understanding. And we can't say enough about the people who are willing to do that. And we'll wrap up with a really cool idea that you may have seen around, and it's going to be around a little bit more. It's called Appreciation Station. So, a few people have posted it on their social media pages, and the Oregon School District will put it on our page this week. But it's a link to click where anybody in the community can say a note of appreciation for anyone within the school district. And as of this morning, it had only been up a couple of days, and there are already 60-some appreciation notes. So, you see those really cool cards? Those are being handmade by Michelle Brizak, one of our wonderful administrative assistants at the district office. So, every time an appreciation comes in, a card is made, and it's sent to the person who's the recipient of that appreciation. And you can thank Erica Mundinger's creativity for Appreciation Station. And that's it.
Great. I love this part of the meeting when we get to see all the good things that are happening. And I do want to also, somebody in this district who has a pretty vast job from human resources to legal and everything in between, and now with COVID. Gina, you organized the vaccine clinic, and you have done a lot of things. So, I want to make sure we show our appreciation to you for all the things that you've organized and contact tracing, and it's been a big couple of years like it has for everyone. But thank you for all your work, for making that actually happen. So, thank you. All right, so, closing, future agenda. Our next meeting will be on January 3rd, as I announced earlier. So, that will be a special meeting. Stay tuned if we have that or not. And then, we will be moving into closed session, but before we do that, I will do checkout. So, if any board member has anything they'd like to add before we go, I'll start with you, Mary.
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Heather? Troy?
For me, just a note for the executive session, I'll be excusing myself from item number three, the collective bargaining agreement, as my wife is a teacher in the district.
Kevin?
So, I kind of brought the question up about the student on the school board or representing the students, and you said that person's going to, or that student will be chosen from this group. Was that previously an elected position by the students? It never was?
It came from student council.
Okay.
So, previously, it was a student council representative. And we're just looking to mix it up a little bit, and it might be someone who's also on student council. We don't know yet.
Great, thank you.
Anna? Tim? All right, we will take a couple-minute recess, and then we will convene in closed session. Thank you, everybody.